All right, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join Councilman Bothroyd in the pledge to our flag and country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And remain standing if you would. Prayer. Want to do that?
No, go ahead Steve.
Well, Lord Heavenly Father, we again come to you thankful for the blessings that you have given us as individuals and as a community and as a council. Please guide us in our deliberations this evening so that we can do what is the very best for the citizens of our great community. Open our ears so that we may listen and understand. Open our hearts so that we can associate with what is being said and watch and care for those in uniform today as they protect us and our country, greatest country in the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of December 21st. Item number two is public comments, community announcements, any recognitions? Don't have any. Item number three is our consent agenda, agenda items A, consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of December 1st, and B is the approval of the fiscal year 20, year-end budget amendments number 11.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval from those present to approve the consent agenda. Item number four, discussion, possible action to award bid number 2020-12 wastewater treatment facility construction. Leroy.
Before I start on that, there is a packet at each one of your spots that is the latest version of the zoning ordinance amendment that Dan's been working with you all on. So January, when we have that workshop, that will be the packet you will want to read. Each of you are handed out a spreadsheet to talk about this. In kind of the grayish blue on the bottom left, we actually won't be asking you to vote on awarding this contract. Tonight, we'll be awarding this contract on January the 19th, our second meeting in January. And the reason that we will be doing that is by that date, we will have closed on both segments of the 16 million OWRB loan. We've closed on the first eight million. It's been approved, but we won't actually close on the second eight billion until after the first of the year. And we have the temporary construction permit, and by January 19th, we'll have the final construction permit. And then it also will give us a little time to further review and fine tune change order number one that we're going to be talking about. So tonight, you won't actually vote on this. It'll be January the 19th. And the salmon collar on the far left is the engineer estimate from July. Construction, 14,408,757.76 with a 10% contingency of a little over a million 440,000. And cost of issuance and so forth. So total cost projected was 16,884,412.28. Next column in the green is, I don't have a bid tab of all the bids, but this is the low bidders, the apparent low bidders I have. For section A, the base bid for the wastewater treatment plant, the firm was HCCCO. Their bid was 15,500,000. The lift station, section B, young contracting, 2,594,000. And section C, off-site sewer lines, young contracting, 1,995,040. So total construction, 20,000, 20 million, 89,040. So when you compare the low bids on construction to the cost estimate, it exceeded our cost estimate for the construction part by 5,680,282, roughly 39%. Some perspective on the bids exceeding the construction cost estimate, and we can get in more detail, but first I'd like to go through my whole presentation. But it was a competitive bid process. We did get seven bids, so the price wasn't tied to just only getting one bid. Rejecting bids or delaying a project would probably result in higher, not lower, cost. And interest rate on the OWRB loan may never be this low again, so we're enticed to move forward the project. Cost of materials have increased over the last 12 months during 2020. There have been some production facilities that have closed, at least temporarily. There's been shipping delays. And if you get on the internet, you see just the cost of plywood and what it's done in the last few months. And this project was put together over a five-year period, which makes it, it's difficult at best to put together a bid package for a complex project like this, but then when you do it over a five-year period, is some of the reasons. I went back in 2017 just to show that it happens to other communities and different engineer, different city. In 2017, the city of Edmond, when they went out bids for their wastewater treatment plant, city had originally estimated at 88 million. City staff estimated at 127, or city engineer estimated at 127 million, and low bid come in at 171 million. So in 2017, Edmond's water plant exceeded their engineer estimate by 44 million or 35%. So this does happen on water plants and wastewater treatment plants. Now, if we could go before we entertain questions, to the far right, the blue, what we have done is section A, the wastewater treatment plant, base bid 15,500. In the bid packet, we had three alternates that were deductible. Wastewater treatment plant, off-site access road. The parking area and interior access road was deduct number two. And deduct A4, potable water main extension to the wastewater treatment plant, that takes 300,000 up. Those are things that we can do in-house. And then change order number one, which is exhibit A, which is attached to your document, so it would be the second page. And I will let Tenny and Bill address any of the deducks that is being proposed in change order number one, but that reduces the price by 1,026,669. So that takes the base bid down to 14,173,331,000. Section B, lift station, there was a deduct B number one, 14th Street access road. We will do that in-house. That takes off 45,000. Section three, there was no adjustment. And then the things we're going to do ourself, we added back in 120,000 for city materials that we will need to buy out of pocket to go with city labor to do the things we're going to do. We reduced contingency from 10% to 5%, so we still have just under a million dollars of contingency for unknowns or unexpected costs. And with the cost of issuance, the total adjusted project is 20,631,289.20. The funding resources that we had initially, OWRB clean water, SRF loan, 16 million, that has been approved. We've closed on the first eight, closed on the second eight million in January. We had been depositing money into the wastewater treatment fund, and it is at 1,189,568. We'll be transferring 375,000 from the CMOM fee fund into the wastewater treatment fund, 375. And the general GPWA operating fund will take 66,72120 out there. So that means the funding gap is 3 million dollars in the form of, for lack of a better term, bridge loan. We will pledge, right now, our GPWA fund has a balance of 1.6 million, almost 1.7. We'll pledge a million of that. Out of the general fund, it has a fund balance minus the CARES Act of almost 2 million. We'll pledge a million of that. The general fund stabilization fund has a balance of 864,500,000. 500,000 pledged from that. And the GPWA stabilization fund has a balance of 907,000. So we'll pledge 500,000 of that. So that's where, when we authorize the contract in January, we can show that we have the 20,631,289 to do the project. Those funds will probably never come out of those various funds or just pledged against the project. We've talked to our bond counsel, our financial advisor, and OWRB, because we can only borrow 8 million each calendar year in January of 2022, and this project is an 18 to 24-month project. It'll still be ongoing. We will go in and borrow an additional 3 million from OWRB at a projected interest rate at 2%, 18 years. Our payments will be 198,600. And right now, our CMOM fund above what we have committed to other financing, there's about 240,000 annually to make that payment. And so that will be the source that we use to pay that 3 million difference. So with that, I've kind of went over the bids, the adjustment to bids and the financing. I'd be glad to answer questions on that. Any specifics as to amendment number one, I probably would defer those to either Tenny, Maker, Public Works Director, or Bill Myers, our city engineer.
If we're going to go ahead and borrow, again, 3 million to finish it, could we not just add these things back in and just plan on borrowing 4 million instead of 3?
We could, and we got a year to figure that out. But we had originally pledged 4 million out of the CIP sales tax to go towards the wastewater treatment plant. And that's where we've been putting that money into a fund. We created Fund...
65?
Yeah, I lost my place. Fund 65, the wastewater treatment fund. So that is sales tax money for the CIP, that part of that 4 million that we've already clawed. But yes, we could adjust the 3 million to a different amount, but we won't be able to borrow until January 2022.
Sure.
If we got some time, we'd make those decisions.
Will we have any trouble getting money for, like, if Tenny's going to do road work or we do any, you know, track hole, back hole type work, dodo work, fixing whatever we need to?
Talk about other projects besides the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
I've tried to look at it, of course, tonight, in the regular council meeting, you're going to be awarded the Harrison Avenue Bridge. 621,000. The funding's there for it. The Division Street tap grant, making our sidewalks from the alley south of Harrison to the alley north of Oklahoma on Division. That is an 848,000 project. The 80% of it is funded by the tap grant from ODOT. The 169,000 match for that project is actually sitting in the grant fund, so it's a separate pot of money, so that project's good. The Guthrie Lake spillway that we looked at, making some improvements with a 65% OWRB grant, that project was estimated at 1.8 million. Our match on that would be about 637,000. We'll probably put that on hold for a while, partly because there's some complications with it. Last communication we got from OWRB, they're not even sure they're going to get the funding for their 65%. So that one will probably go on hold. The industrial park, we'll probably, we were going to have to hold up a little bit on that because remember, when we're using CIP sales tax, that's coming in over a 15-year period. We're not at year 15, so we're still collecting that money. So that's a 4 million dollar project. We were going to have to build some money up towards that. We will be looking after first year to see if we can get an EDA grant, or if we have an industrial project prospect that shows interest, we may move it up. But otherwise, that project, we may put on the back burner for a while while we get caught up. Phase one of Owens Field, a million dollars with the potential million-dollar land and water conservation fund. I believe we'll still be able to move forward with that project. Sooner road improvements, that was going to be down the road anyway because the bridge at Harrison, then we do annual projects, and then about every three years, we do a big project. So that one wasn't going to happen right away anyway. And our annual street overlay, the 2021 project would still be able to go forward. That has been looked at by the street committee, but I don't think they've come forward to the council to get it formally approved. But the proposal is first in Springer, and that project, I believe, is around 100,000, and we would be able to go forward with that one. So yes, a lot of our projects will be able to go forward. Some of them, for various reasons, we may hold up and maybe stage them a little different than what we thought.
So we've got, we've basically got a 12-month holding pattern or semi-holding pattern until January of 2022.
Correct.
And we still have some flexibility, but it's just a little bit tighter than we normally.
We've got flexibility. If we have a hiccup, the world shuts down and sales tax goes down, we will have reserves that we can get through the year. But we just don't want it to get so tight that we get ourselves in a bind. But yes, we do have flexibility.
I notice in Fund 80 and 81, they're significantly below a million each. I thought they were over a million, no?
The stabilization fund will be up to a million very shortly. And, I mean, GPWA, on the general stabilization, remember we advanced the money for the ambulances? We have subtracted that from it, but technically, that's a loan to ourselves.
That'll come back in.
Correct. But we didn't want to show it in the balance because technically, it's not there because we loaned it to ourselves.
Sorry, been committed.
Those ambulances.
Okay.
All right.
So we're just 5 million over. Sorry, Steve.
No, I'm just going to say, again, we're not taking that money out. We're just basically pledging that.
Correct, because you can't award a contract unless you have the funds in hand.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. So the money's still going to be there unless something really dramatic happens.
Yes, and we don't anticipate any problem with the OWRB loan for 3 million in January 2022. There would be opportunities to borrow from other sources if we needed to. And talking to our financial advisor, he said to be on the safe side, we ought to calculate a 2% interest rate.
So we can only borrow 8 million a year because of our size?
No, that was a restriction that we put on ourselves many years ago, and I'm sure that whoever did it thought they were doing a good thing to keep the city from having a city manager go wild and put us in debt, and we'd never be able to pay it off. They put a cap on it, thinking they were doing a good thing. I've seen it in other towns back in the late 80s, early 90s. Cushing had a deal where you couldn't even buy a piece of equipment over 75,000 without an election of the people. And so you do things sometimes thinking that you're doing a good thing, but you're really hamstringing the organization. To change that would be a little bit of difficulty. It might require voting the people. It would at least require us, the banks that are carrying our current notes would have to agree for us to raise that cap, because when you borrowed money a few years ago, that cap existed. Now you can't arbitrarily just change it. So it's something we did to ourselves.
So council did it?
Yes, as trustees of this.
Other questions, Leroy?
So does it make sense to look at changing it? Interest rates are so low, it's ridiculous.
It won't help us on this project immediately, but I think once we get this done, as we plan for the future, I think it would be reasonable for us to look at going through a process to raise that cap, because when you're talking about major projects, like, say if we do a study and decide to replace water lines or sewer lines, then you're going to be right back there fighting that again. So yes, I think it would make sense for us to look at raising that cap.
That's it for me. Okay. Anybody else have questions, Leroy?
Again, we will bring this back to you on the 19th to actually award the contract.
Right, right. Okay. Good information, Leroy, I appreciate that. That being the last item on the agenda, our Guthrie Public Works Authority is adjourned, and we will move into our city council meeting of December 21st. Second item is the consent agenda items A, B, and C. A is the approval of the minutes of special city council meeting workshop of December 1st. B is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of December 1st. And C is the approval of the fiscal year 20, end-of-year budget amendment number 11.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, right hand? Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number three, discussion, possible action to award bid number 2020-13 Harrison Avenue Bridge improvements.
Our cost estimate for this project, the construction piece of it was 500,000. Low bid was 519,000. We will put in the money to make up the 19,000 out of CIP. So staff and the engineer are recommending awarding this contract to young contracting in the amount of 519,211.20. Target start date would be January 5th. Target completion date would be June 5th, 2021.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? There are none. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to award bid number 2020-13 Harrison Avenue Bridge. Been a long time in coming, but it's here.
Yeah, it has.
Item number four, discussion, possible action to approve responses to the October 2020 ice storm.
We're not recommending any changes as to using the incinerator that we're using at the landfill to dispose of the debris at our convenience center. We are still collecting it ourselves, and we don't recommend changing that. The FEMA reimbursement has been approved. I read that just today. So we will be getting FEMA reimbursement now. It has been approved. And last week, on December 14th, I believe it was, on Nine News, Oklahoma City Street crews, it was reported they picked up 20,000 tons of debris with roughly another 80,000 tons to go. They've done 35 square miles to date. So other cities are just in the same boat we are, and I think we're making good progress, and we'd like to continue the course and use the air curtain burner and to get rid of it. And we would like to continue our crews, and we will musically review it, and we could always change if it desires, but right now, we think we want to hold the course if council's okay with that.
So we don't need any vote on this?
No, sir. Just an update.
Okay. Question, is the process going as we expected in terms of picking up on the side of the streets, and we have good compliance and?
Tenny, I'll let you address that.
Challenges, opportunities? What do we got?
So as of this morning, we have cleared roughly right at 10,000 cubic yards. We've covered everything from, starting at the West City limits, and we've made it all the way to Division. From roughly Grant down here by Mineral Wells Park area to College, we've covered every bit of that area as of this morning. We've removed roughly right at 10,000 cubic yards, give or take a few. We've burned roughly half of all of that debris, including everything that's came in from the free dump that we're letting citizens bring in to us. That has slowed down tremendously. We're averaging roughly four to five customers a day. Earlier on, we were getting anywhere from 50 to 60 customers. That slowed, that's dropped tremendously. I think what we're seeing now is five, six a day, roughly. We're just getting started back. We've only ran four solid days removing that 10,000 cubic yards. Of course, the snow slowed us down. We transitioned over and put sand units on trucks and took care of that for about a week there, and we got back going this morning, again, picking up brush. So I feel like we're making pretty good headway. We do, as far as everybody following the rules, there is several that has not cut their stuff up yet. We've seen, we're documenting that, taking photos. We've had a few that's got stuff, you know, stacked around some utilities and stuff like that. Again, we're documenting that, taking photos, and if they can make the adjustments, we'll make a second round and handle all that on a second round if they can just make the adjustments that's needed.
I've had two or three people brag on your guys since that deal started, said, man, they pulled up in just a few minutes, it was gone. Those guys are on it. So tell them I at least know there's two or three people in town.
I will say, we've had, I appreciate that, and I'll pass that along. We have had a couple complaints on some yard damage. Some of that's going to just, it's going to happen. The guys are doing their best, though, and if there's anything major that does happen, we will go back and address it, so.
Okay. Thanks, Tenny. Well, again, to echo what Don and Brian have said on behalf of the council, thank your staff. Thank you for stepping up and your staff for doing what they do, what they always seem to do. It's greatly appreciated by everybody.
I'll pass that on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so no action taken then on that item four. Item number five, city manager report.
I have no additional report tonight.
Okay. Item number six, comments from council, Councilman Long?
Just hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Tenny. I know it's a lot of work, and I know you guys have been going one way to the other, back and forth, so I think everybody's doing a great job. I've heard the same thing. I've got people saying the same thing. But thank you for also today, guys. I saw we all gave away the, I think it was CAD. The, I saw we all gave away the, I think it was cash. I thought that was a neat deal. I think it was $6,000 money you gave away. So that was outstanding, 30,000 people coming to shop. So that's great for Guthrie. So, and then thanks, staff. I really appreciate everything everybody's doing. It's a lot of work, and so, and I agree with him. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Pageant?
Well, there isn't anything else to say. I think it's all been said. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Councilman Bathory?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Tenny, your group always does an awesome job. And Leroy, you guys have been doing phenomenal with this whole $5 million increase deal. I mean, that's a pretty hard blow, you know? So I commend you on that. That's it for me.
Councilman Chandler?
I don't know if you saw, but last week I won a big old trophy. I'll start to bring it tonight.
You should have brought that thing.
I'm not sure it fit on this desk. But I didn't, Evans, because I knew it would embarrass you. But anyway.
So you brought some of the brisket instead?
Yeah, it was a county deal, and I didn't want to stir Evans up. But anyway, I'll let you come and see it if you want.
So you, so you didn't bring any brisket?
No, I didn't bring any. I didn't.
So if we show up, you'll cook for us, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if it's on the right day.
Okay, all right.
We never hear about this till it's over.
I know.
Chris got his feet in the door somehow. I don't know how that happened.
Now, you guys enjoy your holidays, and you got about two weeks to just chill, so do it.
Now, don't you smoke hams and stuff during the holidays?
I normally do, but.
Not doing it this year?
No, a lot of people are not having the traditional gatherings that they had, so I didn't know how big of a deal there would be. And I don't want somebody saying I gave them a COVID either. So I just. I'm kind of bowed out.
Another COVID impact.
There you go.
Leroy, I don't have the specifics on the tourism response that we got from the state, the ads or the giveaway. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology, and I don't see Justin here. But there was.
Here he comes right now.
There he comes.
He didn't want me to mess it up. Justin, go ahead.
Justin, you want to?
You didn't watch it?
You want to speak to the fantastic response that we've had statewide?
We just had a weekend getaway prize package that we were able to partner with a bunch of our local businesses, as well as the state tourism office. And so it was an online giveaway that we ended up with about 19,000 contestants that entered the contest, and we ended up with about 5,500 folks who opted in to get more information about Guthrie amenities and stuff that happens here in town. So.
Good.
Yeah, it was a really well-received contest, and congrats to the person from, I think, Midwest City who won the weekend getaway in Guthrie.
And that's the most entries they've either had in a long time, maybe the most entries they've ever had on one of their monthly contests.
Yes, sir.
Yep, people want to come to Guthrie, America.
It's a pretty great place, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And congratulations to you and coordinating this and the businesses that supported it. Again, super job.
It's pretty easy, and we've got a lot of great places to share.
Does make it easy, does make it easy. Okay, well, Merry Christmas from me, too. And with that, I adjourn our city council meeting and call to order our special Economic Development Authority meeting. Consent agendas, item number B and C. The A, I'm sorry, A and B. A is the minutes of the special Guthrie Economic Development Authority meeting of November 10th. And B is the approval of the fiscal year-end budget amendment number 12. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, right hand? Raised. Unanimous approval of all those present to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to considering some nonprofit foundations and boards and expenditure of public funds for purposes of concurring economic development.
What?
Yes, sir. It's right there.
That was sketchy. I'll move that one.
I was trying to compress it. I'm trying to compress it a little bit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then from all those present to move into executive session to pursue what I said.
We're going to go on this side.
We're going outside, okay. All right, we will see you in a little bit.